Five thirty, so we are going to call to order the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two Eugene Water and Electric Board Regular Board Meeting Session. And just to let Matt and John Borowski know, the reason that I am chairing this meeting is that even though we are Passing the gavel, I'm still president until we officially do that with election of officers. So I'll just chair this shortly and then pass it over to John Brown if we elect him to be president. And so let's just start off with our agenda check. Well, first of all, I want to welcome everybody back. Happy New Year to everybody. We'd really hope to have this meeting in person, but the universe had other Ideas, so maybe in February we'll be back to in person. And now we'll jump in with the agenda check. Does anybody have anything that they would like to say about the agenda? Well, per, oh, go ahead.
President Schlossberg, I was just going to mention that there's been some interest from commissioners on adding a little bit of time to Agenda item number twelve, which is our discussion on the headquarters building. There's a number of questions From staff on that particular item. It does look like that there's some room freeing up in the agenda From, you know, lack of public testimony this evening, and also we can make sure some of the other items stay on track or Or under the allotted time. So just wanted to mention that if we if we get to that agenda item, Whoever the president is can can feel free to extend the time potentially, but that's been noted by a few commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then something else that was brought to my attention is that We have our board retreat dinner coming up in a couple of weeks. So I don't know that we need to decide on that right now, but that is a board decision. So we might just want to keep our eye on that and Figure out what to do unless people feel like we need to just go ahead. Go ahead, John Brown.
I'd just like to say, you know, I know that the state or somebody else will dictate it and people's personal preference will dictate it. Personally, I'd like to have a meeting, even if we're, if we can stay six feet apart, I still go to dinner and And things such as that. I think it's really good that that we, the five of us get together and do it. I think it's, to me, it's some of the best time spent. I mean, like when we did the Lieberg Canal Tour and all that other stuff. If we can pull it off, we can pull it off. But I know that to make the decision outside of a quorum is kind of buttoned up against the open meetings law if we decide to do it or not do it. So I'm just saying that maybe we ought to say, well, everybody be aware that we keep hold that date and then let You know, nature take its toll. Whatever it's gonna do, it's gonna do. And personal preference, but not have anybody feel, if they don't feel comfortable, let's not do it. Would be my preference.
That sound okay? I'm seeing head nods. That sounds okay? All right, fingers crossed that this will be a quick wave. Okay, going on to items. Items from board members and general manager. So anyone who wants to jump in with anything? Matt?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to Give a shout out to Laura Farthing and the team who is working on the water storage project Up on Fortieth Avenue. I got to take a tour of the site and and watch the blasting up there, which was pretty impressive. It is remarkable how much that site has changed. And the work that's being done there. It is dramatically different to encourage. I tell commissioners, if you haven't been up there yet, it's worth going and taking a look. Anyway, I just appreciate how easy the staff team made it for me to get up there and take a look and get a tour, and it was all Really organized and comfortable and safe. Anyway, appreciate the team and the tour.
Yeah, Sonia, and then John Borowski.
I just wanted to thank staff for all their work during the snowstorm. Ironically, I went to Colorado to see snow, and I think there was more snow here. So anyway, I really appreciated the updates and all the hard work to get people back in in power because I know it's It's very difficult when the power is out and it's so cold and they're dealing with snow. So thanks, everyone, for their hard work there.
John Borowski.
Thank you. I just wanted to be, I guess I want to be the first to thank Mindy for her excellent service as president this last year. You know, it was my first year on the board, and you did an amazing job of shepherding us newbies through this. And I want to really thank you and appreciate you for all you did over the last year.
Thank you very much. John Brown.
I'd like to also echo that sentiment. I think you did an outstanding job and just for the others' education. As soon as I said that at the last meeting, I gave you a little bit of praise. I got a text message from one of our former commissioners saying, oh, He said, I want the beach house and my ring back. And you can pretty much figure out which Steve Matal that was. But anyhow, he said, I thought I was the best board president. They said, not anymore. So anyhow, I just, I thought that was a little levity there. But and I too would like to comment on this last snow event, having been through Many of them and and ice and everything. This was the least impactful on our operations that I saw. I saw the outages and I saw where they were. And, you know, my phone didn't ring once, which normally it rings twenty times a day. And And I just like commend the staff, all the people in the field and everybody else that I think did an exemplary job. Rod and his crew and Karen and everybody, you guys did Outstanding work and thank you very much. I mean, we're in nice warm homes. These guys are out climbing trees and And poles and it's freezing and it's snowing. And thanks again for doing such a great job.
Frank, is there anything you would like to say?
Just a couple of things. Commissioners, good evening. Welcome to two thousand and twenty-two. It's it's nice to see everybody. We really were hoping this would be in person. We had planned it that way, but unfortunately we'll have to to do that. Hopefully next month or one of the upcoming months to be able to do that. I wanted to thank the crews also, also the the support staff behind the scenes that facilitates all the procurement of materials and coordination. And our communications team who did a lot of outreach during the snowstorm. And also, we had some water disruptions as well. So we can't forget that people still need water during these times and Were able to handle all kinds of disruptions during a holiday period, and I thought it it went incredibly Well, considering the circumstances. And so I wanted to thank really everybody at E-Web who pitched in on Keeping the lights on and the the water flowing. So thank you for that. And then finally, I just wanted to do a quick shout out to One of our neighboring utilities, Emerald Peoples Utility District, EPUD. Their general manager, some of you know Scott Coe, he retired at the end of the year. Wanted to wish him well and then Kyle Rodman, who's going to be his replacement. Looking forward to working with Kyle. A lot of the local utilities, as as the commissioners know, work hand in hand on a lot of issues. And so Looking forward to working with Kyle, but wanted to wish Scott Coe the best in in his retirement. So Thank you, President Schlossberg.
Only small thing I have to add is that I noticed in my Not E-Web email today that I got a new E-Web pledge to prepare Email. So I don't know if we send that out every year or we're just revisiting it again, but I really appreciated seeing it because I think this is the perfect time of year to Focus on that. And as somebody who only has a half put together kit, I really appreciated it because I kind of need that extra nudge. So thanks for the team that is sending that out. Okay, well, we don't have any public input, so we are going to skip over that agenda item. And we're going to move right into our board action items with approval of Consent Calendar A.
I'll move to adopt Consent Calendar A.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Consent Calendar A is approved, and now we're moving on to Consent Calendar B.
Move to adopt Consent Calendar B.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Consent Calendar B is approved. All right, we're just moving right along with Agenda Item Number Seven, which is Election of Officers. I don't really know how we do this, other than does somebody make a nomination? Sonia, you can.
I nominate John Brown for president.
Great. A second?
Second.
Okay. And then do we nominate a vice president or do we vote on the president first?
Tonight, usually you ask for additional nominations for the position. And if the slate isn't voted, then you you vote on the president independent, and then you vote on the vice president. If somebody didn't nominate a slate of Brown and Jones, then it would be Brown, and then you would go to Vice Chair.
Got it. Okay, so there are additional nominations out there. I guess I'm a little confused. Is this where we would nominate a vice president now?
No, if you had other, if you had other presidential nominations.
Okay, no, no one's going to jump in and make this exciting, looks like. Okay, so now we vote on the president, is what you're saying. Okay, so all those in favor of John Brown being our next E-Web president, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain abstaining just because.
Well, good thing that the rest of us voted for it. So congratulations, John. You are now the president.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thanks again, Mindy, for doing an exemplary job. Thank you. I guess my first order of business will be to call for nominations for Vice Chair from the floor. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I move Sonia Carlson.
I'll second that. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? If not, I'll close nominations and call a question. All of them in favor for Sonia for being Vice Chair of the E-Web Board, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the team, Sonia.
Thank you.
Your abstention, okay, one abstention, four for yays and one abstention for the record. Thank you very much. And And as you know, I've done this before, and I've been called the taskmaster before, and if I push too hard, push back. I like to keep on a schedule. One of the Policies I do on the timing is if we have thirty minutes allocated on the agenda, I give staff half of it maximum, and then I cut them off, or at least ask them if we could wrap it up. So the board at least has fifty percent of the time to talk. If I'm pushing, if people say we need more time to set, tell me that, because it's not my show. It's just I'm just the ringleader, so to speak. It's, we're all equals in this, and so we just get the gavel. So with that, the next Agenda item is going to be Agenda Item Number A, the appointment of Board Leads and assignments. That's an action item and Frank, do you want to talk about this, or do you want me just to go through the list of the opportunities?
The the plan was President Brown, that you would run through the opportunities One by one, and there are incumbents in some cases, and so just running through those one by one would make sense.
All right, well, let's go to ElCog. Currently, we have Sonia as a primary and John Borowski as the alternate alternate. I know Sonia is on the, I believe, the Executive Committee As well, and that's a pretty good position to be at ElCog and things, and then she has expressed a desire to continue in that position. Is there anybody else that would like to be considered for that position? If not, I will congratulate Sonia Carlson on being reappointed to the ElCog Board, and congratulations, Sonia. Mackenzie Watershed Council, current representative of John Borowski. We don't have an alternate. And it's, I did it for years. It's a fun position. I know that there's some other positions that John could be Considered for too, and we want to make sure we spread this out and make it equal. John, do you want to express a desire? Do you want to stay? You want to go? What do you want to do?
I've enjoyed my tenure up there, and I would be willing to do it again. But if there's other people that are interested in it, I also Could could move around to any other position. So I am open to whatever is the will of the body.
I have a question for you, John Borowski. Is this the position that in the past we haven't had a board member Be on that Carl has taken that role?
There are a number of staff that attend the Mackenzie Watershed Council. Usually, there's, I would say, Three to five E-Web staff that attend that meeting. So I just kind of give a little bit of the board perspective and listen to A lot of times, it's a lot of praise from them for what E-Web has done upriver. So Most of it's handled by Carl and some of our other water Team. So I'm just the last link in the cog, but there are a couple other elected officials that attended.
Commissioner Schlossberg, you are correct. This this was actually an open liaison position for a number of years that was filled directly by staff up until Commissioner Borowski volunteered to to fill this role. So it has been filled by staff in the past, but I also believe that it's Good to have publicly elected representation there, and if he's willing to continue, we'd love to have him.
That sounds like a pretty strong endorsement, John. If there's nobody else that wants to jump in, then I can issue John a congratulations for being reappointed to the Mackenzie Watershed Council as E-Web's liaison, and thank you very much. Appreciate it. You'll be a good steward of that watershed. Thank you. OPEB or other post employment benefits. I'm currently the the person there. I've been there before, other board members. It's a non-voting position, so you're kind of there to listen, and that's it. You don't get to vote on anything. You meet quarterly, And you talk about the the funds and the insurance and for the retirees and, you know, where we are with that position. It's 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 not very time consuming. It's Mostly reactive rather than proactive. You listen, and then you can comment, and that's about it. I'm willing to do it again, but also I'm board president, and there's other positions that are That are weaning, and so if somebody else would like to get some experience at that, Nobody's going to hurt my feelings if you want to take it. It's it's wide open. So if anybody would like to do that, Feel free to say you'd like to be an OPEB rep. Looks like I'm going to get, get it. I don't care. I'll do it again. So just put me down for OPEB. And we'll go from there. Next board, Springfield Utility Board. So We, we haven't met with them lately, but we did for a while. I think it's good to have Somebody else in there that will be, that could do that, and you get to know other board members. You can you can meet with them and just What we were doing there for a while was meeting with, Steve Matal and I were meeting with their board leadership and It was a pretty good relationship. We haven't met in probably a year. And I don't know, Frank, are we going to continue that or not?
I would think that there's a couple of ways to approach these liaison positions with other utilities. One would be directly through leadership, President to President, Vice President. The other one is through these positions, which which give other Commissioners the opportunity to develop some relationships as well. So I would I would like to continue those. We, at the management level, continue to work closely with With Springfield Utility Board, Lane Electric, EPUD, and the other local utilities. So I would like to see it continue.
Okay, all right. Would anybody else like to step into that position?
I'd be willing to take a shot at that position.
I'll close the nominations. Congratulations. You are now the liaison. It's it's really good. It's it's fun to get to know those people and to understand where they're coming from and learn a little bit about their organization. It's a It's a real good group of people that talk, talk to and everything. The next is about Lane Electric Liaison. Currently, it's Mindy. And Mindy, do you have any desire to step off, stay on?
I would say that I've been, I have not been a liaison. I've done a terrible job over the last year. I will blame it on COVID, but I have not Had any meetings with them. So I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm happy to step it up if if That's what we should do, or if is it, I don't know if it's better to have. I think I took it because I was told that the president takes that role, but I'm open. I can do a much better job.
Well, that, you know, that would be nice if you would, because we can add some diversity in people and going to different organizations. I'm a Lane Electric customer as well. I've got some property that's in their service district. But one of my business partner's husband is on the board, so I think it probably wouldn't be good for me to To be there per se. We're kind of friends in a way, so probably better if you stayed there and did whatever you could do. And besides, they serve really good dinners, too. And when they have their meetings, their quarterly meetings, you go around, they have really good food. And so you'll enjoy that. Okay, well, Mindy Schlossberg will be the Lane Electric rep. City Eugene, I think we discussed that at the last meeting. That would be board leadership, going back to the board chair and vice chair. So that would be John Brown and And Sonia Carlson, unless somebody else has a big burning desire. I think we'll go back to that so we can have a little more diversity there. And then the the last one, I think, is going to be the new liaison assignment. Frank, can you help me through that?
Yes, President Brown, we can, we can actually do this potentially later. The board, there's, there's actually two opportunities for liaisons with the board. One would be with the project team. This would be the project team potentially that develops the criteria for evaluation. And the other one would be as part of the evaluation team itself and up to Either one or two commissioners Per team, if the if the commissioners want to Have those liaisons as part of the process, and I think we should probably discuss the process Later on Agenda Item Twelve before the board makes that commitment.
Okay, well, then that will take care of Agenda Item Number Eight. I think we're through with the appointment of board liaison assignments. Next Agenda Item will be Board Policy SD fifteen, climate change, and I think Frank is going to take that.
Yes, President Brown, Commissioners, good evening. For the record, this is Frank Lawson, General Manager. Next slide, please. So this Agenda Item is for the board. It's your own request to take action this evening on revisions to E-Web Policy SD fifteen, which is our climate change policy. The board deliberated on these potential changes in both November and December. And links to both of the background memos for those meetings was also included in this evening's board packet. Advance this slide, please. So in summary, while the board felt comfortable with the general directives of the policy Over the past months, some additional substance was added, along with more direct links to how the policy details will be implemented, adapted, and tracked over time. More details were added in the, in that how the board and management will implement decisions That have climate change impact, as well as how information will be reported. Since the last board meeting, some distinction was added to the policy related to Scope One and Two GHG emissions and reporting, Still leaving some room for analysis and Scope Three GHG emissions, if applicable, or practical In some circumstances or decisions, and those Track changes were included in the board packet this evening. Final slide, please. So I'd like to close by thanking the commissioners and staff for collaborating and navigating through these improvements over the last few months to the policy. And with that, I will recommend to you, President Brown, that the board tee up The motion to potentially approve Resolution Twenty-two oh-two, which is the update to Board Policy FD SD fifteen, climate change. So or fielding further questions or comments. I'll turn it back to you, President Brown. Thank you.
Thank you. Since this is an action item, I'll open the floor to questions or comments from the other commissioners this time. I see no hands in the air and no requests to speak, so then I'll call the question. Somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two oh-four, the update to Board Policy SD fifteen?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, move by Carlson, second by Borowski to adopt Resolution twenty-two oh-four. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next Agenda Item, as we're rolling right along, no concerns about time or no longer concerns. Strategic Goals and Organization Performance Measures. Frank and Rod, I think, have this Agenda Item.
Thank you, President Brown. Your reputation precedes you. We're already well ahead of schedule, so thank you for keeping us on track. So good evening again, Commissioners. Joining me this evening for this Agenda Item is Rodney Price, Assistant General Manager. Go ahead with the next slide, please. So the objective of this Agenda Item is to garner approval from the board on our two thousand and twenty-two organizational goals, Which represents the general manager's interpretation of the mutual priorities between management and the board. Next slide, please. The discussion of the board's priorities began last month, along with a general discussion of some straw goals as proposed by management to the board. Based on the feedback that we received from commissioners, some of these goals have been modified for better alignment between board and management. Unlike some organizations that create goals and only revisit them late in the year, Our process continues, following the approval of these goals with the development of metrics and milestones With process and or achievement monitoring and reporting at least quarterly. So you can see by this diagram that These are living goals that we work with you and report and and measure as we achieve them or Need to take corrective action. So next slide, please. So just as a quick reminder, as well as for any public or employee awareness, We try to balance and prioritize our goals in order to ensure business continuity while simultaneously Strategically positioning the utility for ongoing success. And so therefore, you know, the goals tend to fall into the three categories shown here on this slide. Some of them are Are perennial, they're operational, others identify very discreet opportunities or weaknesses that we need to address. And then there's some that are milestones and have strategic impact long term. So next slide, please. So as detailed in the the board background, management is proposing eight annual goals for two thousand and twenty-two. There is a lot here, by the way, And we recognize that there's a lot of work ahead of us to accomplish these goals. I won't read each goal this evening specifically, but would like to identify a few of the highlights. So This first page is primarily foundational and or ongoing requisite work, as you might refer to it. The first goal continues healthy operations, while the second goal clearly identifies An ever emerging challenge and opportunity to cultivate The workforce necessary to perform the important work that we do for our community now and in the future. The second goal has been developed significantly and expanded quite a bit since our conversation last month in December, In part because both the board and management and employee feedback Because of the looking at the importance of building that foundation and recognizing that the landscape is changing. The third goal recognizes both the the drivers and the commitment necessary to address And fulfill compliance obligations associated with dam safety and our FERC licensing requirement at both Lieberg and Carmen Smith, which I know the board is very much aware of. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This second page is primarily strategic, with the exception of the tactical goal that I would, really the last one listed there, associated with the disposition of the headquarters property. While all these, these goals are important, their strategic timing is, for the most part, self-driven. Goal number four, the modernization of E-Web's information system requires us to prepare to replace the ever-changing and ever-aging technology that we have. The Integrated Resource Plan is a necessary component to understand the value of resources and products prior to the whole slew of decisions coming in the mid 2020s. And then addressing operational resiliency in both water and electric, along with starting the process to evaluate and understand the impacts and opportunities of rate design are included in these 2022 goals. Next slide, please. So Commissioners, as the goals, the goals as presented try to capture the feedback, not just from last month, but really based on observations that we've worked on and opportunities that we've talked about and looked at throughout the year. Although not absolutely required with the additional opportunities, we can edit this further. But our intent this evening would be to garner your approval of these 2022 goals so that we can get started and continue working on the alignment, the measurements and the resource allocations necessary for good execution and achievement throughout the year. President Brown, before I pass it back to you, I just wanted to invite Assistant General Manager Price to see if he has any additional context or comments he wanted to add. And then if, once he's done with that, he can pass it back to you. Rod, do you have any comments?
I don't at the moment. I think you've covered the subject quite thoroughly. Thank you.
Great. So back to you, President Brown. Again, we, if there is additional comments or edits that the board wishes to discuss, that'd be great. Or if our ultimate desire this evening would be to get our 2022 goals approved, either as presented or, or modified. With that, I'll turn it back to you for discussion.
Thank you. So I'll open it up to the other board members for questions or comments. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Frank or Rod regarding the, the goals for the next year? Mindy?
Yeah, I think that these goals look great. I think they're really ambitious. And I think that this will be like our mellowest meeting of the entire year, just looking at what's coming forward. And I just want to, once again, recommend that we take advantage of the time that we have allotted for work sessions, because some of these things, I think, would be great to break up, to not work on in a regular board meeting. But otherwise, I think that they look great and pretty exciting work for us to do in this next year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Matt, and then Sonia.
Thank you. I would second Mindy's suggestion that we use the, the times we have blocked out for second meetings during the months where we can in order to chew on some of the stuff this is, as Mindy said, a very ambitious set of goals. The one thing I, I would add, and I think we're doing it already, so it's not like a new, but we are tonight reviewing and, and perhaps queuing up revisions to the board policies. And I think that's an important activity for us as a board. And it's something that maybe we include in the next round of updated goals. You know, it's something we're doing anyway. I think it's worth having, you know, having that reflected there and keeping that on the agenda. That's all I have. I'm not suggesting we need to push that into this for this particular version, and I will certainly be prepared to adopt these. Thank you.
Sonia?
I, I really appreciate the work that we've all done to get to this place. I agree that it's ambitious. I'll put a motion out there to approve as is. And, yeah, if others have a second, I agree.
If somebody wants to second that, we can still have discussion, or if you want to wait to, to finish the discussion. I mean, for purposes of moving it forward, I'll second that, and then I'll open it, open that motion up for discussion. And if you're through, then I'll, I'll go to John B. too and see if he has any questions or comments.
Thank you. No, I, I think I'm pretty, pretty okay with the, the plan as it's put forward. Just for me, a couple of things that I would like to see, and this, this goes to staff as to when, when you're implementing this plan. A couple of the things that I would be very important to me. In number, in number three, on the Lieberg Hydro and Carmen, more so on the Lieberg, getting some actual dollar amounts as early as possible, you know, ballpark type of things. It, in the year is going to be something that I'll be looking forward to. Same thing with number six on the second treatment plant. You know, we've been throwing numbers around, but when it comes down to decisions, the earlier that we can start kind of, that I can kind of start wrapping my head around the numbers and where those, where those dollars are going to come from will be a determining factor in how I want to move forward. So the earlier that we can get those, again, preliminary numbers would be good, because that leads me into, into number seven, which is a multi-year rate design plan. So, you know, if we know we've got these big projects coming forward, and yet we're trying to, to jump through item number seven without really having a clue as to what number six and number what four are going to cost us, that, that would give me pause. So I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with it as it is, but just know that those are some of the things that I'll be looking for going forward, because, you know, if it's gonna, that, that's going to be one of the driving factors in making my decision. So thank you.
Okay, and I have a, a comment as well before I call a question. Goal number one, where we're talking about using, integrating and using advanced metering data when we've stopped that project for lack of supply and technicians. Are, is that just the wisdom around a goal that has been stopped? And whether or not we have foreseeable future in, in, I don't want to set us up for not attaining a goal and, and things such as that. Could you just comment to that real quickly about how those two work?
Yeah, President Brown, thank you. We wanted to acknowledge, first of all, that the AMI project was not fully accomplished from previous organizational goals. We did run into a supply chain issue. As soon as that supply chain issue is, is corrected, we do plan on full deployment as well as starting to operationalize the, the data. This, the way that this goal is written is to use this technology as the deployment allows us to. So if, if we are able to resume a, a, the deployment as we had before, we will certainly do that. We also didn't want to box ourselves into a corner based on something that, at least at this point, was a little bit of out, out of our control. But we wanted to keep AMI on the radar, and so it was written in for that purpose.
Thank you. I, I agree with that. Thank you. That's a good explanation. Any other questions or comments before I call a question for moving this forward? If not, there's been moved and seconded that we adopted 2022 organizational goals as presented by staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Well, look at this.
Thank you, Commissioners. Look, look forward to a, a busy year with lots of work sessions so that we can keep Mindy smiling. Make sure we, we use those, but thank you very much. There's, there is, there is a lot here, just, just so you know. And we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and get busy on it and, and I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, well, now it's decision time. I mean, if the way we're going, we could have a work session after this meeting. So we're almost an hour and a half ahead. And so people want to keep moving on and, and just forego the break. Just head nods, that's all I need to say. Let's continue moving on as long as staff is okay with that. And we're going to go to the item number 12, the E-Web Headquarters Property Solicitation Process. Frank?
Yes, Commissioners, good evening once again. This is Frank Lawson. With me on this particular presentation is Ann Caugh, Administrative Services Manager. Go ahead with the next slide, please. So the, the purpose of this evening is to gather as much guidance as we can from Commissioners on the solicitation process associated with the disposition or potential sale of the headquarters property. This is something that you did receive a background package on, a pretty detailed background package that included a description of the process, as well as a whole series of questions that we would like to get from, some feedback from the Commissioners on. We'll get to those questions in a minute. At this point, I would like to have Ann Caugh run through at least a high-level overview of the process. What you received was a draft solicitation process, so there is still the opportunity to make changes based on your feedback and your comments and your direction. So with that, I think next slide, please. So with that, Ann, can you provide Commissioners with a high-level perspective of how we're proposing this process will work?
Certainly. Thank you, General Manager Lawson. Good evening, Commissioners. The slide before you outlines the proposed timeline for the RFP from development to completion. Thoughtful planning and close collaboration with the board will be key to our success. And we recognize the importance of creating a fair and equitable process that reflects your values, goals and priorities. And we know that the solicitation that we put forward will directly influence the quality and quantity of the proposals that we receive. The project team, including the liaisons that will be appointed later this evening, will work iteratively with the full board to further develop and refine the solicitation until it ultimately earns your approval. And we aim to accomplish this by late Q1 or early Q2. The project team has prepared the preliminary draft that General Manager Lawson referenced. And this process is very similar to the methods used by 4J School District when they sold the Civic Stadium. As we were developing the RFP, we identified several junctures where the board may wish to provide direction. And like our previous headquarters property agendas, tonight's agenda item is about listening. And we'll also have some time for Q and A at the end. But before General Manager Lawson moves on to some of those specific questions for the board, I'd like to pause for a moment to give Commissioners the opportunity to comment on the proposed timeline and the solicitation process in general. Do any board members wish to comment, or shall I go ahead and turn it back over to General Manager Lawson at this time?
Well, Mindy has a comment, and I will have a comment. So go ahead, Mindy.
I just have a question, looking at the timeline. So Q2 starts in March, is that right? Or April? When, when is that?
And so I was thinking of Q1 as being January through March and Q2 being April.
And so we're assuming that we're going to get all of this done. And then like, starting in April is when we'll start collecting proposals. Is that, am I reading this right?
That's what we're aiming for. What my thought was, is once we have the liaisons appointed, the project team will work offline with that group to bring back another iteration for the board. And depending on your feedback tonight, if that's something we can turn around quickly, we'll bring that back in February, either the regular meeting, or perhaps we can leverage some of those work sessions. And if not then, then it would be in March that the next iteration would come back to the board.
And I am just gonna rely on the expertise of my fellow board members and also of staff. Like, I've never been through a process like this before, and I am just curious, like, how long it takes people to get the funding part together? Like, is, is this a realistic timeline? I know John Brown has something to say about, he has some thoughts too, but I'm just going to say, I've never been through a process like this. So I don't know if this is an overly ambitious timeline, or if this is totally reasonable. So I guess I'm just, it's not a question specifically for you, Ann. I'm just, it's something that I'm wondering out loud. I don't know how to get the answer to that, but I'm curious what others think about that.
Well, I'm gonna, I had a comment too, if I may, and I, you know, having been through this process with numerous organizations. And, you know, I have this old thing that says that, you know, it, time kills deals. And this seems like to me it's, it's stretched out quite a bit. And we've got, we've got a lot of utility work to do, not real estate work. And, you know, look how long it took us to sell that, just a bare land. We're losing between $1,200 and $1,500 every day that we don't monetize that asset. If you're three to 4% on 15 million, it's just a rough number. But you think of that, plus our holding costs and what it costs to mothball that thing. I mean, we're still insuring it, we're still heating it, we're still maintaining it and things such as that. So I would hope that we could move this along, because this economy can change just like that and everything else. It's an ambitious thing, but just a question for you, Ann. So we start January 4th. By December 1st, what do you envision? Will you have in your, will, will E-Web have in its possession? Or Frank have in his possession? Is that to negotiate a purchase or to consummate a purchase by, in, in the 12-month period?
I'm aiming to be in a position to negotiate by Q4, whether that be December or not. There are some questions we have later in the, the board meeting tonight around how long we should leave the solicitation open. We're proposing 90 days, but we're looking for your feedback on that, as well as the liaisons. And a lot of it will depend on the proposals we, we receive and what those potential buyers would need to negotiate as far as timing. Another question we had is whether the board would entertain a lease to own and some of those options that may be presented to the board. So a lot of it will depend what's brought to us, I think.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just, I just, I go back to my timing deal about, you know, this. I'll, I'll go with this, but I just, I just don't want to get so bogged down that in December, somebody comes and says, now we have to apply for grants from the legislature, and we have to do a fundraising thing, and it's going to be 12 to 18 months to do that. And as, as we continue to go on and on, I think it took us nine years to do Civic Stadium. Between the, the public input, the, the challenges, the funding, you remember, we had two or four proposals for that. And, and it was a very challenging thing to, 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 to get through. And it consumed the school board for many, many meetings and many executive sessions. And it's just, I want to make sure everybody's prepared for that type of a time thing, a time crunch on us. Or because most of this has to go into executive session when we're talking about negotiating things such as that. So I'm just putting it out there, the, the timing is, I'll accept it, but I just don't want to go beyond this, because it's, this thing can have a life of its own, and that's the only thing we'll be doing is real estate. That's what we did for quite a period of time when we sold the, the, the land, is it was just dominated us. And it cost us millions of dollars.
Yeah, President Brown, I, this looks pretty good compared to 10 years. I'll just, that, that's an editorial comment. But I would, I would also say there's, there's some potential opportunity in the questions coming up to simplify this. The more that the board can simplify it, then the potentially more expeditious it can be. I would also want us, as part of the criteria, to be able to consider the financial terms so that someone doesn't come to us in the negotiating phase and say, oh, we have, we still need to go get our financing. The, the disclosure of the financing would have to be part of what we're evaluating so that we would, once an award is, or, or an organization or recipient is identified. so that we would, once an award is, or, or an organization or recipient is identified, a primary one, that there's a pretty tight boundary around what those negotiations are to complete the deal. And if someone comes to the, to the table with a proposal that doesn't have secure financing, then I think that would be included in the evaluation criteria as such. So, um, that, that, at least that would be what I think we, we intend.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? John B.
Thank you. Um, yeah, as somebody who's been in a couple of these RFPs, both on the scoring side and the developmental side, i.e. it was more for affordable housing that I was, was involved with it, but still, it's, it's something I've done a few times through some positions that I've had through the city. One of the things, uh, and, and I'll touch on some of the other things as we go through the questions, but specifically to Ann's question on the timeline, one of the things that I think would be helpful to the people who might be putting together these RFPs is a, a, you know, the communication of what we're looking for. Once we have the RFP, we have a communication plan that is put in place. But I think it would also be advantageous to do kind of an early bird, you know, hey, E-Web is going to be developing an RFP for the Headquarters, to give people some heads up so that they can start getting some ducks in a row, whether that's financing or whatever, even before the RFP qualifications are put out there. Because I think it is a, quite a condensed timeline for, for this type of property, especially if we're look, looking at, you know, some nonprofits or other community-based organizations. They're not going to be able to move as swift as, as private market people might be able to. So, any kind of advanced warning, even if it's just a press release that says, hey, the, the Board has decided to start developing an RFP process for the Headquarters building, and this is our timeline, that might be helpful to some of the people that are coming forward.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Borowski. I know that I did see the draft communications plan earlier today. I don't recall if it had the, the, I'll, I'll call it the pre-release communications as part of that phase. Potentially, Ms. Caugh could actually elaborate on that if, if she knows off the top of her head, but I do think that's a good suggestion, and, and we'll incorporate that into the communications plan.
Absolutely. A press releases on the docket. We hadn't decided on timing, but with this guidance, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. So, President Brown, there's a, a series of questions. If we wanted to advance to the next slide, there, I, I don't remember exactly, there's, there's probably a series of, of a dozen questions, and I didn't, if you would prefer to moderate this, um, you know, one question at a time, and if people feel like there's a particular question that they want to lean into more than others, then we can just go through these, or if you'd rather have me do it as part of this presentation, I can do that. I know the Board did receive the presentation ahead of time, so you probably have a little idea of what, what questions are coming. But do you have a preference to, to lead that, President Brown, or leave it up to me?
I think it'd be better if you did, Frank, just because of the fact that, uh, if I'm participating or I'm even considered to participate in this process, whether it be, you know, in the RFP or the, or the criteria or the evaluation, I, I'd wanna, I don't want to lead it because you can direct a conversation sometimes, and I just think it would be better if I respond, if you don't mind.
Sure, be happy to do that. And so, well, we'll kick this right off with the first question, which has to do with the, uh, the role of the potentially two different sets of Board liaisons. One as a, as a team member and the other in the, as the project team, which is creating the criteria, and the other one, which is part of the evaluation team. And the, the question really is for the Board as to the roles of those individuals, whether they are full participants or whether they are liaisons who are bringing back information to the Board from the Board perspective. So, there, there can be a full participation on one end, or there could be simply an advisory and, um, uh, role on the other end. And so, this question has to do with, does the Board want to have participation in both the project team and the evaluation team, and to what extent would those potentially one or two individual members, and they are acting as individuals, they are not acting as the collective Board, um, participating with the project team? So, this is to solicit your ideas around and your thoughts around the roles that these liaisons could fill, could fulfill within both the project team and the evaluation team. Any, any Commissioner comments?
Um, Sonia's, I'm, I'm gonna ask everybody for comments. Sonia, I'll start with you, and then just go through the list.
Okay, uh, I, I think it would be good to have liaisons to both the project team and the evaluation team, and I would advocate that we have those be, if we, if we choose to have two people, I'd say, you know, have a different person for the project team versus the evaluation team. Or if we have two people for the project team, then we have a separate, you know, one person for the evaluation team, just so there's a little bit more diversity in, in Board involvement. Uh, but I think it would be valuable, from my perspective, to have some of us sitting on there and being involved in it.
Okay, Mindy?
Um, I completely agree with Sonia. I think that, um, my, my hesitation, well, I, I absolutely think that the Board should be involved in this. My hesitation is that, um, if we're acting as individuals as part of this team, I really want to make sure that, um, that we have a diversity of opinions or, you know, that, that Board, that Board members equally get to, um, kind of participate, even if they are not specifically on the team. Does that, I don't know if that makes sense, but I just want to make sure that it's, um, that we all kind of get a, a voice in this. But, um, otherwise, I, I agree with what Sonia just said.
It's, to me, that, um, you know, Board involvement here is, is important. Uh, I don't have strong feelings about exactly how the liaisons are broken up. I have to say with this whole, um, this whole particular decision-making, uh, I, I kind of share your concern, Brown, about this absorbing a lot of time. So, um, you know, however these liaison positions are set up, I just hope that we can make them a reasonable lift for the, the Board members who take those positions so that they also have bandwidth to deal with the other pile of huge decisions that we'll be making this year. That's all I have. Thank you.
John B too.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I also believe that Board participation, uh, as a team member is important. If we split them and, and do both, I think that's important as well. I think that any one of us as Board members brings something to the team that may not be in there as, as a wholly staff-driven team. As far as the makeup of the different committees, you know, the first one, the RFP criteria, you know, that's kind of quantitative, you know, what are the ma, metrics we're looking for? And then the second one is more of a qualitative. We're scoring them, and that's more of a feel. How do we feel about this? Does it check the boxes? What are the points that we can award? But the other thing that, that we also have to always consider is that these are just going to be recommendations that are brought back to us as a whole Board. So, it's not like, oh, this is going to be John B2's recommendations. We're going to come back, and we're going to chew this over as a full Board. And so, I, I'm not so worried about the consistency of how these things are made up, because it's just a matter of getting the values and what we want as a utility to get out of this situation, and then it comes back to us to really chew on as a full Board.
I agree, and, and my two cents worth is, is that, uh, I, I think diversity on these positions is very important, because to one of us, um, what, uh, what a museum or a science or arts may have different weights and different values, and if we're going to assign hard-line points to intended use or projected use or community benefit, that's a very subjective thing, and, and that's going to have to become, you know, as Board members, we're going to have to represent a constituency, and we're going to have to think about how we're going to weigh that. That's, that's not easy to do. Uh, and so, I, I, I appreciate this, and I think the diversity on, on both the project team and the evaluation team will be good. And John B said it best, to, it's all coming back to the Board.
So, President Brown, I think that there's a couple of really important nuances that I, I think really everybody who's commented has touched on. All of the decisions are made by the Board as a whole, um, and there are multiple check-in points for the Board as a whole. As individual contributors to these teams, you are basically contributing to the team. It's not a subcommittee, which then has different, um, legal requirements, but you, as individuals, would be, um, acting as a contributor to the process that would then absolutely correctly come back to the Board at various points for various decisions. So, I just wanted to make sure that there's a clear, clear distinction there. And what I'm hearing is the Board is interested, um, as individual Commissioners, having participation at both the project team and the evaluation team level, and we can have up to two, and it sounds like, based on the fact that there's four, um, that there's, the diversity of four different individuals participating is, is something that's definitely of interest to the Board. So, someone unfortunately will be left, left out since we have five, but, um, it's, it won't be left out from, they will not be left out from the decision-making process.
Okay. Uh, so you have what you need on that particular decision?
I think so. Ann, you've been part of the project, um, team. It was, is, is that an adequate level of feedback? And I guess I'll get to John Borowski here in a second.
Yes, that's what we needed to know. Uh, main question was, will the liaisons participate fully as team members? And I'm hearing a, a yes. The only question would be, um, does the Board want to circle back to the actual appointment of those liaisons, since we skipped over that earlier in the agenda?
I, I think the answer to that is yes. I was actually going to go to that next, but I, I saw Commissioner Borowski had a, had his hand up.
Yeah, the, the question that I had would be, since there's four of us, and there are four positions and five Commissioners, would it be appropriate to have an alternate, uh, person who could sit in? I mean, this could be several, several meetings, and there's probably going to be conflicts at some point. So, do you think there's a possible, and this may be a legal thing, but would there be a possibility that the fifth Commissioner could be the alternate?
I'm not sure, Commissioner Borowski, how practical that is, given the fact that I think this, e, even though there's probably several, two or three meetings, there's a lot of continuity between those meetings, and I, and I think we might miss something if someone was dropping off and on, so, but I, I will, but I can also evaluate the legal perspective on that as well. I don't know what that would be.
I think we might be bumping up against a quorum, which would trigger a public meeting. Uh, we can explore that further to confirm.
How would only two Commissioners constitute a quorum?
Oh, I meant if there was a, a third Commissioner that sat in as a, as an alternate.
They wouldn't sit in unless one of the other people couldn't make the meeting, I think was the intent.
Oh, okay.
So, John, John B and Matt are the two liaisons to the, the evaluation team, and John B can't make it, so, uh, Mindy's going to be the alternate. There, there'll never be more than two Board members participating in the process. It's not three, is the way I understood it.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I will look into that.
Yeah, I understand the clarification on that, President Brown. I, I also know that there's some, there are some legal pieces to that that we'll need to check out.
Okay, Mindy?
Um, well, this is an exciting project that has all of our interests. I think before we get too far down that rabbit hole, we should make sure that everybody even wants a spot as one of these liaisons. So, maybe not everybody does, and so that point is moot.
Well, that, that's a great segue, Commissioner Schlossberg. I was going to ask President Brown to do what he did with Vice, with the Vice President role with both the project team, um, if there are people who are interested in the project team or the, and/or the evaluation team. I guess I could just ask for volunteers, and if there's more than two volunteers, then we, we, I would have to lean back on the Board to make a selection between those two. I guess, I, I guess I can just do it, I can do it that way. I guess we would start with the project team and see if there are any Commissioner volunteers to serve as members on the project team.
So, to be clear, that's the one that's setting up the, the criteria for how it's evaluated later, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
There's a template for it in the background, or, that they kind of took from the Civic Stadium process about, you know, they had an example of points for price and for intended use and qualifications of the developer and things such as that, and that you would be setting up those criteria, I believe. So, we have-
I don't need to do either.
Sonia's on, and is there anybody else that would like to volunteer for that position?
Commissioner Borowski, is that a volunteer, or is that a question?
I'd volunteer for that one. Okay, the project team is filled unless I hear somebody else having a desire to do that? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Now-
And then the evaluation team is the second one. Do we have any volunteers for the evaluation team? I see Commissioner Schlossberg's hand.
Come on, John.
So, I only see-
I'm doing, but, you know, I, I've got a lot of experience at this, but I, I want to make sure that everybody else has an opportunity as well, because, uh, you know, you're going to hear from me, whether it's the beginning or the end, and so, um, if, you know, think about how you play your cards. If you, if you want me in there at the initial part of it, I can do that, or I can just wait until it comes to the Board. I'm, I'm okay with, however it plays out. I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, and if, if this doesn't work for somebody, that's fine. I'll step up and be, uh, be there with Mindy. I, I don't care.
Yeah, so, um, John, I think you should take that role if you'd like. I, I'm happy to do it, but I'm, I'm not, like, jumping at the bit to do it, so-
That's fine, that's, I'll, I'll, I'll do it, man. I'll, I'll, I'll be more about to do it. I just want to make sure that the opportunity was out there for everybody, and if, if it's not something that you're just jumping up and down, then don't do it, because it's going to be, it's going to be time-consuming, and it's going to be, especially the evaluation team, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's, it's a fun process.
Thanks for stepping up.
It sounds like, uh, John B2 and, and Sonia are on the project team, and, uh, John Brown and Mindy Schlossberg are on the evaluation team.
So, my question to you, John, is, I know you're hesitating and waiting to, waiting to, uh, jump in, and, and I really, uh, am kind of leaning on your expertise on this, because you've been through these several times, and this is kind of your ballywok. You know, if, if somebody came to the Board and said, I want to learn how, or I want to sell noodles, you know, I would want to be on that committee. I'm just wondering, do you think that, you know, I, I could switch and go back and forth to either, either one of these two? Do you think you would be better off in the, in the first one or the second one? And, and I'd, I'd let you take your pick.
They're equally important, because, uh, you know, when, when we get the project team that has the criteria that we're going to evaluate, we're all going to get to weigh in on that, John. And so, I, I, as long as we get to weigh in on it early enough, so we don't have people feeling that all their efforts and their proposals were for naught, because we may have a different perspective. And so, as long as it's communicated well, and we go through that process, uh, I'm, I'm okay with where I am.
I'll stay where I am then.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Um, with the, we, this, this will be helpful as we develop what we bring back to the board at large. And so, um, I appreciate your willingness to participate and then contribute, but both as, as board members, as a board, as well as individual commissioners. So thank you. Um, the next slide, please. Um, Ms. Ca, I was just curious, uh, the stars, are those the important questions?
Yes, they are.
Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to make sure that in the, um, sensitive, sensitivity of time. Um, so this, this is an opportunity to, um, clarify a little bit from the board as to the goals for the disposition of the property. And, and there's, you know, elements that may be missing in the evaluation criteria. We, we provided some general guy, you know, some general information around that. Uh, this is an opportunity to weigh in, um, although without a lot of, of commentary at this point, we will bring back our interpretation of it. Um, but this is an opportunity for the board to weigh in on the, on the goals for disposition of the property. This also might be an opportunity to weigh in on, on, uh, number three, um, which could be part of the, the goals around disposition. Is this really something the board is interested in, in, in just selling, um, leasing, trading, get rid? You know, how, uh, what are the options that could be on the table, um, from the, from the outset? Um, is it strictly a, a fee sale? Or is there other kinds of options that the board would be willing to entertain? And so with, with that, I guess I would open it up to, to comments. I'll start with Commissioner Carlson.
I, I know that I've heard a lot about, you know, time and we want to get this through quickly, but I do want to make sure that whatever we end up doing is the best decision for the community. And sometimes that takes a little bit more, you know, thought and time and process. And so I may be, I may be in the minority there and that's okay. I want to make sure that that space, whatever decision, you know, gets made is a fair process and that it's one that will be a, a major benefit to the community because it's a really, it's a, it's just such a valuable and wonderful community resource that I want to make sure that we, whatever process we choose and the criteria that we choose, it ends up being one that's valuable for the community. So I'm not one to say, you know, it, it should be just a cash sale and do this quick. Um, I'm personally willing to look at, at other options, uh, mostly because there might be other opportunities out there that I think could be very beneficial to the community. But, um, that's why we put diversity on these panels. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. Are there other thoughts?
Um, I have a couple of thoughts if I could. I, I, um, we want to get out of the real estate business. Uh, I'm not so sure if we want to do a long-term lease unless we want to be a property manager and do that. Um, a trade, okay, somebody offers us a trade, then we're going to have to evaluate that property and consider it, do, you know, the appraisals and the environmental and all that. And this thing will go on and on. Then we're going to have to ascribe a value to it. Um, and then when Sonia said something about an all cash, I don't think legally we can carry a contract, can we, Frank? I think we can't obligate future. We have, it has to be cash. And, uh, and so things such as that. So, uh, um, you know, I, I, I don't want to make the wrong decision, but I want to make the one that, you know, when we talk about moving this forward, you know, just like I say, the economics of 1,200, $1,500 a day in interest that, that we could use this money to pay off debt that's accruing interest at three and four percent is, is a factor that I'm going to consider too. So, um, going from there because we have a, a, a pretty large community to serve.
You're, you're correct, President Brown, relative to the ability of a private, of a public entity like E-Web carrying, um, the financing for, um, the sale of real estate. Um, I'm sure, we will clarify that as part of the evaluation criteria of more, but, um, it does, um, anytime we would end up with a long-term lease or a trade, that, that is going to complicate things, things significantly. And I don't think that's what Commissioner Carlson was asking for. I think she was really more concerned about the ultimate end use of the property and making sure that it had, um, s- some degree of benefit for the community.
Any other comments on this? Um, I, I, I just have a quick question if I could, Anne. Um, the, in the, in the background, you have things in the property description and then that's just, is that just a placeholder? Or is that something that is, is going out? Because I had some comments on some of the things that we made representations in there. I kind of had some concerns about what's being said about the property.
Um, I'd like to discuss those with you. The information that we have in there for the most part is, um, what we used in the survey of interest. Um, there's been some additional details added. So if you have some areas of concern, let's talk about those and I will get those updated for our next, um, iteration.
You want me to just tell you what they are right now? It could be real quick.
Sure.
It's just on, on number two property description where we make representations that what the city of Eugene is doing will have a positive impact on, uh, on the properties, on our property's real estate value. I would caution against making any representations about an, an increase in value from what they're doing because this market can change in two seconds and somebody buys it and said, well, we said it was going to be enhanced because of development and it's not. And then boom, they're back on us. I just, I would just let other people make their, their decisions about what that adjacent development is going to do because, um, people that are in this league are going to know what it's going to do. And if we make representations and it doesn't happen, um, then they say, well, you guys said it's going to have a positive impact and it didn't. I just don't want to get into that representation thing. And that was just kind of a concern on some of the background material.
Thank you for that. I'll definitely strike it.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Brown. I believe, um, Commissioner Barofsky and then, uh, Commissioner McCray had some comments.
Thank you. Um, yeah, for me, um, for the board's goals for disposition of the property, you know, I, I know that Commissioner Brown has, uh, has alluded to the fact that past boards have, have said that, you know, that they're going to use the, the proceeds from this property to help retire the rock, uh, debt. Um, you know, prior boards have no say over, over these boards. Um, you know, if that board, I think if those boards had, had known that there was going to be a 80 to $100 million possible fix to the Lieber dam, they may have, may have had other thoughts about how this money might get spent. Um, so just where, where it's going, that's, that's coming up. Um, as far as the number three, which is number two on my list, um, you know, trade, like, like Commissioner Brown said, that would have to be, uh, it would have to be a heck of a good trade for me to even consider it. Um, as far as combination of purchase, lease, trade, I can foresee something where it would be a lease to buy, you know, where somebody's going to leave. We say, yeah, it's going to be two years before you can get it going, but you're going to have to lease it from us for that two years before you purchase it. Something like that I would be amenable to. The long-term lease, again, it would have to, I would have to look at the, uh, the financial qualifications of the entity to, to be able to say yes to a long-term lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barofsky. Um, independent of past board comments on the, the retiring of debt with the rock. Um, the, the way that we would treat that today, there's, there is no legal obligation to reuse this for retiring that particular debt. It would be used in, in, in essence, the highest and best use of cash. Um, and so our financial people, when we talk about reserves and, and things of that nature, the uses of the, of the funding would be, um, at the board's discretion, but it would not be legally obligated to retire debt at the rock, just, just so, just to make that clear. Um, Commissioner McCray?
Yeah, just my quick reactions to these two questions. Uh, I feel like the, the elements you have here in terms of, uh, uh, evaluating different proposals are complete and, and sufficient. Uh, and then, uh, in terms of the different options, from my perspective, and, uh, I haven't been through this, uh, so I, I definitely defer to those who have greater experience. But, um, I would want to see, I guess, all the options available to people who want to make proposals. It's, it, it seems reasonable that we would probably not look as fondly at a trade proposal as we would at, uh, a cash sale. But, um, it seems like cutting off those options may leave some potentially good options, uh, off the table that really we might want to consider. So my inclination would be to leave all the options available.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other thoughts before we move on to the next?
I, I just had a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Carlson.
So on the long-term lease option, I heard you say earlier that that may be something that we can't do as a, uh, as a utility.
We, we cannot do it as a holder of a note, for example. I mean, we have a, we have a tenant in there now, for example. Um, but we, we have to be careful about how we've, would use, um, public funds to finance, um, real estate purchases. And then that's, that's in essence how we would be viewed if we were to loan somebody money, for example, to facilitate that. So we'll, we'll have to-
It's a, it's a legal definition on it. So it could potentially be a lease versus the sale. But if we do it as a financial transaction where we're holding the actual note, then that might be a problem.
Right. And I'm getting just the impression I have from commissioners is that, that a, a sale, a disposition of the property, a divestiture of the property is preferred, um, leaving some options for creativity that could help facilitate the financing of some, something. It would be part of, of what would be evaluated in the criteria. But a- as opposed to just saying, let's just continue to lease this forever, which I'm not hearing from the board. I'm hearing, let's get out of the real estate business, but let's do things that can facilitate that.
In the evaluation criteria, we could actually put some ranking around these to some extent.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next slide, please. So, um, I, I guess I will just leave these all up there, um, for, for the board to consider. Um, the having to do with timeframe, the, 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 um, the comment around competitive range is to provide a mechanism to narrow the field for a second round, um, which would be, we get a, we get a number of proposals, those, those come in and then, um, there's a, um, the board views this as, as an opportunity to narrow the, the scope to two or three, probably at the most, which could go through a, another round and potentially a best and final offer type of approach. And so as opposed to just doing something from the very beginning, looking for an award, I will just leave these up. Um, there's a number of, of, um, there's some advantage, for example, to leaving an open-ended closing date, um, so that if there's other proposals that come in, that those can be given a certain degree of opportunity to be evaluated. Um, and so I think that's, but, uh, any, any comments just generally from the board on? The, these don't have stars by them, which what that, what that means is that we can bring concepts back to the board um, around these issues if there are no strong feelings from the board one way or the other on these. We, we can actually take these and, and, um, try to predict what we think the best answer would be for your review included in the next, um, the next, um, round of, of the process. Um, Commissioner Schlossberg?
Um, I feel really strongly that whatever, um, proposal we accept should have some community value, like Sonia said. But I also realize that that kind of can open a big can of worms and can, I, I take to heart what John Brown has to say, that it can go on forever. So I think what you're asking here is, do we put some pretty firm boundaries on this process? So that we can, um, maybe have the best of both worlds in a way. Um, and I support like putting both like guardrails and timelines on so that we can stay within that. Um, my fear with this process is that this is something that's a little bit easier for, well, I'll speak for myself, to understand than some of the, um, other decisions that we undertake. And so I have a tendency to, um, jump in to this kind of process. And this is making me sound terrible, but I guess what I'm trying to say is I can see this um, mushrooming and becoming like a long drawn out thing. Um, and we have so many other really important things that we have to, to deal with. So I support, um, kind of firming up our, our boundaries as much as we can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McCray and then Commissioner Carlson.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I would, um, agree with, uh, with Mindy. I think, uh, the open-ended closing date makes me nervous because I'm concerned that we get close to some kind of decision and then another opportunity comes there, proposal comes in and we, you know, start going down the road incorporating that and that that could make the, make it feel kind of never-ending. Um, so I'd be, uh, not inclined to have an open-ended closing date. Perhaps it's a longer window than 90 days to facilitate a, a broad variety of proposals. Um, and then I have a question about the, the competitive range concept. Um, the way it's described in here, um, you talk about, you know, different points and ranking, but then, um, it says we expect there'd be a shortlist that would be perhaps a small number of proposals, which sounds more like ranking to me. And so I'm not sure if the, are, are we just slicing it by like whatever proposals have a, above some certain threshold of scoring? Or are we just saying we're going to look at the top, whatever, three or five proposals? Uh, I'm not sure which you're proposing. Um.
It would, it would be the latter of those, Commissioner McCray, and it would probably not be more than three.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me.
And, and typically what happens in scoring is you might get a, a little bit of a cluster at the top and then you, then you typically have a gap. And we would, we would do this where if, if that's the approach, then it might be two or three. Um, it would not be more than three.
Okay, great. Yeah, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Um, I just want to do a time check with, with President Brown. Um, you're, you're muted at the moment.
Not anymore. Sorry. Um, the overall agenda, we've used up our time, our allocated time, but we're way ahead of schedule. So if, uh, without objection, if other people, you know, we're on, we've got three more, uh, bullet points to go through after these, uh, four through seven, if you're okay to just extend this for another 10 to 15 minutes. Um, if I don't see objection, I'll just do it administratively. And yeah, we're going to just keep, keep going, Frank.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Carlson, um, I believe you had your hand up next. Um, you, you are muted also. Sorry.
Uh, one quick clarification after what, um, what Matt brought up. I'm, so the criteria that's set up, we're not beholden to the top one, once the, you know, once everything gets scored. The board will get brought back the, the top three and then we would decide, you know, among those top three or top two or whatever the kind of cutoff is. Is that what I understand?
You would go through a scoring phase and then, um, if the process includes a competitive range, then, um, it would be brought back to the board to discuss, you know, here's the top two or three that we're recommending as the competitive range. And then that would, um, give the board the opportunity to bless those to the next step, which might be a proposal, uh, best and final offer there. It would, it would go from there.
Okay, I'm supportive of a competitive range. Um, I have no idea on the 90 days if that's an adequate amount of time. I'd love to hear others' thoughts on whether or not that's, you know, typical amount of time. It sounded like this was the, this was the amount of time the school board allotted. So I'm fine with that if that seems like it's reasonable. Um, the open-ended closing date, I would love to hear some other, uh, maybe benefits to that because otherwise that also sounds like it would be something that would drag it on. Um, and then the best and final offers, I guess that goes along with the competitive range in that we have a grouping of them that we bring back.
Yeah, um, I want to do an, address the open-ended closing date, but I'll- I wanted to address the open-ended closing date, but I'll go ahead with President Brown. You had your hand up first.
I do. Regarding number seven, option for best and final offers in the process, I just did one with the Springfield School Board. We sold their headquarters building. And what we did is we had an offer that said, we'll give you $20,000 more than anybody else's highest offer. So how do you respond to that? And so it becomes an auction and not a sale. And and you can't, you know, and how do you do that and not, you know, and and so I just I caution against if somebody makes that representation saying, okay, here's one for 700, who is 750. And this guy says, I'll give you 20 grand more than anybody else. Then how is that fair to the others? It becomes you. I'm concerned about that. I wouldn't, you know, I think 90 days for proposers to respond is is fine, but I don't think that's gonna, I mean, that's gonna give them we're going to give them a due diligence package with age and condition of all the mechanical systems and such as that. They're not going to get financing together. And I mean, this is a chunk, big chunk of money. And 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 I don't even know, do we have to do a land use process? Has this been rezoned to allow the range of uses that we're soliciting for? Because I haven't checked last last I knew it was on public land and private entities can't own public land. And it takes it. If it's a metro plan process, that's 18 months.
I'll double check on that, Commissioner Brown. I don't believe we have to go through a land use process. But I I will will make sure that we
Make sure that the property will be properly zoned to allow the range of uses which we intend, which we think would be community benefit. If it doesn't have to be just a strict old generic office for things like that or retail, you know, if somebody wants to put a museum in there, let them. But I just want to make sure that we have the proper land use stuff in order. So I just, you know, say, I want to move this forward. So
And then and the 90-day response time is for the for the proposal not to close the financing.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm that's plenty of time to put together a proposal, in my opinion.
Yeah, the the Ms. Call, there were some benefits to having an open-ended closing date. I don't I don't know who on the project team could elaborate on that. Maybe we can bring that back to the board. And this next this next go around or explain that to the the appropriate liaison. Commissioner Carlson and Borowski, that there were some some benefits to doing that. But I I off the top of my head, I can't recall what those are.
The primary benefit would be if we didn't have a set of proposals that had a good chance of resulting in a sale. And so we wouldn't have to start over if we had that open and a closing date. Once we have an opening date specified, the board could say we have all the proposals we want, and they could decline to put any additional proposals in. It would just leave that option open.
Okay, yeah, that's that. That actually sounds like good practice to me. But and and we can bring that back in the next round of details. Let's go with the next slide, please.
Wait.
Oh, Commissioner Borowski.
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in on this if that's if that's okay. Competitive range. Yes, I think that's definitely appropriate. But just just because we're bringing back two or three, that doesn't mean that the board won't see all our all proposals. And the board could could come back and and elevate one of the ones that may not be in the top two or three. I think from the from the RFP scorings and things that I've been in, it there's always a lot of good proposals. The hardest thing is is weighing two good proposals against each other and which is the best. That's the hardest part. And that's what I'm hoping. That's my best case scenario is that we've got two or three just knock it out of the park proposals. And and they're all win, win, wins. And we just have to pick the the biggest winner. 90 days seems seems pretty short for the for the type of interest that I think we're going to be gleaming on this property. So I would I would lean towards open-ended. And then best and final. You know, that one, I think we can, we can look at that as far as the criteria and and put weighting on ones that will be timed better more as as opposed to saying this, we're looking for best and finals. So those are my thoughts on these.
Thank you, Commissioner Borowski. All commissioners, I think this was this was helpful. That number seven and number four can can work together. You can develop a competitive range. And then as part of that process, there could be the option. You don't have to take it. There could be an option for a best and final offer instead of an actual award to negotiate at that point. So next next slide, please. Thank you. Let's see. A protest process. The the other that these these are actually ones that I think we can probably bring back in to the board. I'm I guess I'll just open this up to see if the board has any comments on these. And there's one final element that I wanted to ask the board about a detail regarding a potential lot line adjustment.
So for me, I would need to know more what a protest protest process means. That wasn't spelled out clear enough to me, but it seems like something that I would probably want to steer away from.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, President Brown.
Yeah, just a just from history of on the protest process. I think we need to to know about protocol on what when somebody asks for a clarifying question or additional information. If we disseminate that, if it's not the original packet, we have to give that to all proposers. And if not, you you see, because maybe it's one group thinks of something that other people don't think of. That's kind of proprietary. But if we're providing information to somebody and, you know, to to one group and we don't provide it to another, you know, are we penalizing that group for thinking outside the box and asking a question that nobody else thought of that's very relevant in in the evaluation criteria? Do we do we provide that response to that information to everybody or just to the people that ask the questions?
I think we'll have to navigate through that, Commissioner Brown. I don't have the answer off the top of my head. I think there's there's some degree of confidentiality that we're trying to protect through the NDA process. At the same time, if if it's a a piece of information that's useful regarding the property, I would think that we would share that to to all of the potential proposers. So there's, I I think it depend, the answer probably to me would be it would depend on the type of information that is being requested. But I we'll have to look into that a little bit more and and how that could relate to a process. If you process, you have to define
Protested in NDA, I'm fine. That's non-dislosure agreement. And in other than that, I think that we got a good framework to start with. Thank you.
Thank you, President Brown. Commissioner Carlson.
I guess the piece that I'm toiling with right now and that are we missing anything of importance? Since a lot of this is going to be you know, in executive sessions and such. And the actual proposals, I I mean, it seems to me that there are there are pieces that, you know, the the different interested groups would want to be under NDA or something of that that sort. Where is the piece where we have the ability to get public input? For me, I'm I'm looking maybe at the evaluation criteria to get some more thoughts on, you know, we put that together. And then we do outreach to the public. I know that 90-day window is pretty short to get a robust process, but I don't want the community to come back and say, well, the commissioners just made this huge decision totally behind closed doors because this was a real estate thing and it was exempt from these kinds of transactions. But it's I really do feel like it's so important that we have community input on this. And so I I just want to make sure that there's a way that we can do that. And if that's maybe in the evaluation criteria upfront so that there's buy-in there that we we get that piece.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Carlson. We'll we'll take that feedback back and see how the public communications piece of this and and how that will work throughout the process at probably intermittent phases throughout it. But thank you for that feedback.
Okay, is there anything else you need from us, Frank or Ann?
I I need one more thing, President Brown. It should should be relatively quick, hopefully. There is a the the question to the commissioners is there is a the very corner, the southeast corner of the the parcel just south of the South Building, it's that the property line presently runs diagonally through, and I'm speaking to the 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 slide now, diagonally through what is that rectangle there, combination red and blue. That's the existing property line. The the plan, the redevelopment plan, Riverfront Development Plan, actually has a a building or a lot that presently includes some of E-Web's property. And it's that triangle in blue that is coupled with the red triangle in as a a parcel in the Riverfront Development. My my question to commissioners would be whether they are open to the possibility of selling that blue triangle independently ahead of the headquarters building to the city of Eugene or the 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 Urban Renewal Agency separate from the headquarters building. And that that's that's my my open-ended question, or whether we leave it intact and let the city or the developer have discussions with a potential future owner of the headquarters building.
I'll jump in here. I think that it would be fine to sell it off to the city. The question that I would have is, could we use this as a bargaining chip to release us from that the stipulation that if we separate the properties, we have to give the Urban Renewal Agency right of first refusal? If we went to them and said, we'll give you that, we'll we'll sell you this property, but you've got to relinquish that, much like we did with the MPG piece of property.
Commissioner Borowski, we we could potentially tie whatever terms we believe is appropriate with with the offer to the city.
Would it would it trigger that clause if we sold this?
It it would it would not trigger the cause independently. We we would have to include language in the purchase and sale agreement that the right of first negotiation for the what what are called the Mill Street lots and the the credit union lots, which are separate lots associated with the headquarters parking that those could be marketed or sold independently. So we would have to tie the purchase and sale agreement of this particular parcel to that if the city would agree to that. Commissioner Carlson.
How quickly could they turn it around? I mean, we just said we're going to do 90 days on the other piece of property. If they decide for some reason that they don't want it after we've gone through six months of this process, now what are we doing? Adding it back on to the other property?
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, the the lot line adjustment process is not an overnight process. You're you're dealing with some some administrative and, you know, legal depth, you know, lot line definitions there that would that would take some time. What could be approached with the city is is a to engage their interests and the potential terms of that interest. And then in in full disclosure with anybody associated with the marketing of the headquarters property, this would would be marketed as excluding this particular triangle even before the lot line adjustment would would be done. But that I I would hope that they could respond relatively quickly with, yes, our interest is this. These are the terms of which we would we would probably offer them the terms. And if they decide not to, they decide not to. It would it would truly be, we know that this is in the interest of your development plan. Here's what we think is the fair value of it. Here's some terms associated with that and give them a set period of time to respond.
Would it be feasible to say like 90 days? So while we're going through the criteria evaluation process, they have the ability to say yay, nay, we want it. So when we start marketing it come April, it's set? Or is that that's way too
What what we do typically with our surplus decorations is we give them 30 days. So I I don't believe that they would need 90 days to respond with a particular interest in a property that we we all know is there. We roughly know what the boundaries are. We know what the value is. And we could spell out the terms. I I don't expect it would take as long as 90 days for them to decide whether they would be interested in fulfilling that sale agreement.
Okay, then I guess I would be supportive of that so long as that process can be completed before the 90-day mark for us that we just determined.
Yeah, what I would probably Yeah, what I would do, Commissioner Carlson, is I would schedule an executive session for February where I could review the proposed specific terms and conditions with commissioners. And, you know, and then within the the boundaries that commissioners provide, the board provides, I could negotiate and potentially execute with the city.
Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, I just got a couple of comments and questions. And so having been through a few iterations with the city and not feeling that we were treated as fairly as we could have been, I'm just did some quick math here. And so you're you're looking at that. You put the assessment down there at 200 grand for a reason. That's about 57 bucks a foot. And you extrapolate that on the entire site. That made that means that somebody's indicating that the site we sold for 7 million or 5 million is worth 42. I'm just I'm just saying, I I don't see the benefit of of this beyond. I mean, how do we know this isn't going to adversely affect somebody's intended use of the turning radius or things such as that for the building or things? They can always sell it to the city, can't they?
Yeah, they absolutely can. That's part of the reason for this discussion, President Brown, is we originally wanted to keep that because our tenant was looking to put in a loading dock on that end of the building. I'm not sure that it's a building that facilitates a loading dock of that type, but we and and that's the RMV for it. I don't know what we would do from an actual pricing perspective. We would. We have to look at that a little bit bit further. But there is there is no I mean, the commissioners can decide that we're going to sell this in its entirety. And the the future, the city can approach the future owner. That that's that's an option for the board to consider.
That would be my preference. I mean, why restrict the utility of the building? We've already got a major national tenant that expressed a desire to have that for functionality. And if we take that away, and then we try and market the property, we've just limited the range of potential uses and users by doing so, because once that's gone, it's gone. And they can't they can't achieve what the what Phillips wanted to do there. And, you know, they're they're a big tenant. I mean, they're Fortune 200, I think. They're they're huge. They won't be there, but I'm just thinking about somebody else in the future. If we we put a museum in there and they need a loading dock or not, you know, somebody else needs something, they can't have it if we if we do this. And I I don't think it's for the money. And and if it's okay to have it, and that's that's, we just don't know if this is a criteria that somebody can always sell on the future. I would I would say let's hold off on it. But it's I'm one of five, so.
Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, just a question for you Frank. So you, you mentioned that the city had this plotted, that the developer that's coming in there has this plotted as one of their plots, the whole thing. So it's in their master plan. They, they're planning to use, to buy that from, that plot from the city and develop it in their master plan. So, you know, is it a deal point that could throw a monkey wrench into the whole Dames project? Probably not, but it's something else that, that they're dealing with. And for me, who's, who's seen that Riverfront master plan worked through over many years and, and redeveloped and rejigged. It, it, they've got a pretty set plan. And, you know, if we're hanging on to this for what if, whereas, and they've got this planned into their master development plan, I would be hesitant to stand in the way for a what if, what has? That's just my, my take.
Thank you, Commissioner. It, you know, based on the feedback, I think I will need to develop some kind of a more formal approach to the board around this, this particular topic. As opposed to, I was hoping if everybody was in alignment, it would have been, it would have been easy. I think what I'll do here is to look into the details of this and bring something back for the board to more officially deliberate on, based on the facts of the, and the possibilities of, of the case that we're dealing with. So I, I won't take any action based on tonight's feedback other than using it for information to bring something further back for the board. Commissioner Carlson?
This may be an, an odd question, but I'm curious, you know, we had a number of groups that had submitted proposals. I'm wondering if, if it would be, you know, worthwhile or, or legal of sorts to reach out to them and just ask if this would hamper. I mean, if those were our top candidates that are most likely to get feedback and all of them say, no, it's not as big of a deal for us, then we can move forward. I know that doesn't, it's not the entire universe of possible applicants, but it might give us a little bit more insight into whether or not that is, you know, a piece of land that they would need or not.
Yeah, thanks Commissioner Carlson. I, I don't know, but we'll have to look into that. I, I don't know what the possibilities are there. Well, I appreciate the varying perspectives on this. I, I will work to bring something back to the board that will provide the opportunity for commissioners to look at this more uniformly and more officially. And I will target that for February, for the February board meeting and, and likely we'll follow up then. I believe, President Brown, that was all that we had on this particular agenda item.
Well, thank you and I appreciate that we had the extra time because this thing morphed into a whole lot more time than we, we, we suspected it would, but it, it did. So thank you. I appreciate it. And you got all the answers you need?
Yes, I did. Thank you, President Brown. And thanks for your leniency on the time and a premonition of things to come potentially on real estate.
Well, look how much fun we had trying to get rid of 3,400 square feet, right? Try and get rid of 150,000 square foot building. It's going to be fun. That said, I want to do a kind of an agenda check with the rest of the board because right now is about the time that we had our, our 10 minute break scheduled for. Would, would people like to take a 10 minute break? I see one hand up. That's all it takes. Okay, we're going to take a 10 minute break and then reconvene at seven twenty or thirty four. And that sound okay with everybody? Okay, see you back in 10 minutes. It's kind of like waiting for a rocket to launch. We're sitting here looking at that timer and say, really?
Well, we just experienced New Year's, John, so this is, this is like watching the, the ball drop.
No. If I see 10 o'clock, I'm up way too late.
So you, so you didn't get up for the James Webb launch?
Nope. I went to a wedding at six o'clock and I went and watched fireworks over at Kellyon Middle School at eight. And I was off the, off the charts by 10.
No, the, the James Webb thing was on the 25th at like four o'clock in the morning. We got up so early to watch that. It was ridiculous. It's like, oh, good. It made it. It actually took off and nothing blew up or fell off. Everything seemed to work well. I'm going back to bed.
Good.
Talk about a long and drawn out project.
Careful what you ask for. It looks like we're ready to start again. I think I can, John B. is around someplace. Maybe the noodles are going to boil in too long. Give him about two seconds and then we're going to start. There he is. Okay, good. I'll reconvene the January 4th, 2022 regular meeting of Eugene Water Electric Board. The next agenda item was item 13, annual board policy review. Frank Lawson, general manager. We've got 30 minutes scheduled and so we'll put 15 on the clock for Frank and 15 for us.
Thank you, President Brown. I don't think I will need 15 minutes. This is really more of a maybe board discussion. Go ahead with the next slide. Thank you. The concept is that on an annual basis, the board will have the opportunity to identify or review policies that, that govern the utility. This is, at, at this particular meeting, I wouldn't necessarily think that the board is actually going to wordsmith different documents. But I would think that if the board had areas of concern or had, through the course of our work together, had found something that needed to be updated, this would be a regular interval that we would have the opportunity to do so. And normally this meeting will be in December. This, this time it got, got pushed. Go ahead for the, the next slide, please. So as, as most of you have, have memorized these completely, there are actually just under 50 there, 48 different board policies. They are grouped according to, to governance, the linkage with primarily myself and staff. There's a number of strategic policies. We, we actually revised one over the last few months, SD 15, having to do with the climate change policy. And then there's a number of different financial and control policies as well. And so the, many of these are mature policies. They've been in existence for, many of them created and originally authored in the, the mid kind of 2005 to 2008 range. Some of them have been updated more than once. Some have not been updated at all. And so there's, there's an opportunity as we go through the, the course of the year and deal with issues that there could be opportunities to do that. The, the one that we have talked about, and go ahead with the next slide, please. The, the one that we have talked about, which has been one that we think there's opportunity, has been that we, we don't in that list find an equity policy. And so I would like to get some feedback from the board relative to what type of substance or categories or comments you would have in, in your direction to, to myself and staff to create an equity policy for review and potential incorporation by the board. The previous slide, we don't have to go back to it. One of the things that has come up with the board, and this was, I thought, a really good suggestion, that when we do have a major revision, that we pull that out, pull those policies out specifically to take a look at, to see if those changes over the past, typically it'll be within a year or year and a half, whether those policies have accomplished what we, we wanted them to. Or the changes or the revisions have accomplished what we wanted to. So there was a roster included in the presentation of ones that have been updated over the last year and a half or so. But with that, really commissioners, this was an opportunity for you to either identify policies that you think need further investigation or review. And I'd also hope to get your comments on potential substance that we, or, or goals or ideas that we would include in, in equity policy that would be a new policy added to the list of 48. So it would be policy number 49. So with that, President Brown, I'll turn it back to you and see if there's any further discussion or comments or policies identified for potential further work.
Open it up to the board. Open it up to the board and ask for questions or comments from any of the board members on anything that Frank has talked about the policy review. John B.
Thank you. It was, it was good to have this and go, for myself, to have this and go through and read a lot of these policies. Again, you know, I skimmed them when I got my huge fire hose last year and being going through and reviewing them again was, was something that was helpful to me, just to remind me and grind me where we are. One of the, one of the policies, and I apologize that I haven't dug into this quite enough, but is SD three, which is the customer service policy. I didn't actually dig into the customer service policy, but I think that that's something that I need to do. You know, we had a lot of, or at least for me, I heard a lot of people talking about our customer service over the last year. And so I don't know if that's something we need. I would like to dig into and look into, see if it needs a little bit more tweaking, if it's addressing the needs that we saw presented to us over the last year. That would, that's the only comment that I have out of that. As far as the questions on the content of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I think it would be helpful to look to other agencies and other bodies in the area because a lot of work has been done on this. And I would hate to have to, you know, start building the wheel from scratch when somebody's got already the spokes and the rims and all we have to do is pump up the tires on it. So I think that there's resources, whether it's the city of Eugene, Lain County, the state, other agencies that are dealing with the same things that we are, to kind of be able to draw from to, to to help us craft a good policy in this area.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? If, okay, okay. First I'll go with Sonia and then Matt.
I agree with, you know, getting a framework from another organization and working through that. There's a lot of work done on this. I'm actually going through a diversity equity training right now and looking forward to this work. So thank you. I really appreciate that this is something that we're bringing up. As for the other policies, I didn't, nothing else stuck out to me. We've already edited the climate change policy. So, you know, the other, other policies that are more legacy policies didn't seem, there wasn't anything that stuck out to me. Thank you.
Matt?
Thanks, John. So I will provide, I think, comments on the DEI policy to you, Frank, by email. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to put together a very graceful language and thoughts right on the spot here. But thank you for the invitation to provide some input on that. And then I have one just kind of peculiar thing that I saw when I was looking through here. GP seven, which is page twelve in this packet, it's the governance policy, process policies, board elementary procedures. As you go down toward the bottom, there's vacancy on the board. I certainly hope we don't have a vacancy on the board, but the way that this is written right now, it says, should there, a vacancy occur on the board, the remaining commissioners will appoint a qualified elector to fill such a vacancy. And so my question is, one, has this ever happened that we had a vacancy and had it filled in this way? With four commissioners remaining, I could imagine there could be a split in who those commissioners wanted to appoint. And so I was just wondering if it would be useful to add some additional around that. It would certainly think to lose a commissioner and then have to be wrestling with this policy if it weren't, wasn't serving our needs. Hope that makes sense.
I cannot speak to the history, Commissioner McCray. I don't know if Commissioner Brown can, since he's been on the board the longest. But we can certainly take a look at GP seven. I haven't been so inclined to do so in my tenure so far, for probably obvious reasons. But I also know there are some, some city charter timelines that drive board replacement as well. So I'll have to double check and ensure that if there's changes to be made, that we would have to do that in the context of the charter that does influence our governance somewhat.
And then the last piece is that I assume that the appointed board member would finish out the term, but that's not stated in there. It's assuming that this is kind of where we would go to if a commissioner left for some unexpected reason. It feels like some additional detail might make that transition easier. Thanks.
Good points. Thank you, Matt. Mindy?
I agree with the comments about the equity policy. I would love to see what other utilities specifically have created. I'm sure that they have created some equity policies. And this is just like a really small kind of weird question, but like the world has kind of changed a little bit now with the pandemic that we can do things virtually. And I'm just curious about the, there's the requirement that if you miss three or more meetings, that you're no longer a board member. And I'm just wondering, like, once we go back to in-person or we're constantly shifting virtual or not, like, what happens if some board members only want to remain virtual? Like, is that, is that just, am I worrying about something that's not an issue? Or should there be some kind of clarifying language? Like, maybe it's okay that people can participate virtually, like what John did when he was on vacation. I think it's a great option if you so choose. Anyway, it's a really small thing. It's just something I've been thinking about. We don't really need to take up time with it, but just wanted to ask that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlossberg. I actually think it's, it's one of those issues that we should really apply a, so internally, we're looking at what we're calling the dynamic workforce model, which is telecommuting is a piece of that. And there's, there's a number of things as to how you manage and motivate and attract and retain the right people under a different workforce environment. And there's probably some similarity to an application to the board. And I think what we can do is go back and look at the policies with that kind of filter to it, with that kind of lens or opportunity, however you want to describe that, and see if those are still applicable based on that perspective. So I appreciate that. I think that's a good observation.
Any other questions, comments?
The other thing I was going to mention, President Brown, was relative to the customer service policies, we, we, I don't know, I don't know if we've done it this year, but it's fairly common that we have some type of review with the board around specifically the customer service policies. Some of that is because we've made a lot of changes over the last several years relative to things like metering and terms and conditions and things like that. So it's pretty common that we actually review that policy a lot more often. The attached documents, the policy and procedures that attach to the customer service policy. So I'll, I'll take a look and see when the last time we did that and if there's an opportunity to incorporate that and bring something to the board for review in a little more detail there.
Okay, Sonia, you look like you wanted to say something.
Sorry, just one last thing I forgot earlier. On GP fifteen, I did notice that it said the board president or their designee is responsible for orientation of new commissioners. I'm assuming that that means that the president has designated staff to do that. I mean, it seems like that's mostly been a staff run thing, primarily because the president may not be the same president when the person comes on board. And a lot of that orientation work has been done prior to the person even taking office. So I don't know. It seems a little bit outdated. Maybe it's not. Maybe there's a reasoning for it, but it was something that was kind of like, well, I'm not really sure we do that anymore.
Thanks, Commissioner Carlson. We'll take a look at that. I don't know that a lot, that work. I've always felt like it was delegated, so maybe that's an assumption that I made falsely. Probably starting with you, when you were president, I probably just assumed that you, you wanted staff and to do that. So we'll take a look at GP fifteen.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just respond to Matt's question about anybody quitting the board. Not during my tenure, but prior to that, there was, there was some some, a little bit of controversy here about, there was a couple of recall efforts. And there was some issues around the general manager years before I came on. And I believe some, there was a board, one or two board vacancies as a result of some of that, those challenges they had. But I don't know the history behind it or anything, but I agree with you that we should probably tighten that up because somebody does quit and, you know, what's the duration? How do you, what if two board, you know, what if it's two-two? You know, that, those are really good observations and I think that's one. And I really like staff's comment that when we do amend a policy, a year later, we go back and see if those amendments have actually affected what we wanted them to do. So I think, you know, twelve months from now, we're going to go back and look at our, our, our policies on energy and things and see what, see what happens there. So good for you. All right. Anything else, Frank, about this particular agenda item?
No, thank you. The next scheduled sort of full review of the policies and we'll, we'll take your suggestions for now and run with those. But the next sort of planned iteration of this will be in December of this year. We'll, we'll start to get on that December cycle. We don't want to put new commissioners in a position of reviewing policies their first month or two on the board, but it does make sense at the end of the year that we would take a look at policies and their applicability and any changes. So thank you very much, commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is correspondence and board agendas. Frank?
There was, I believe, only one correspondence item, and that was an in-depth, more than you would ever want to know, history of the silt arrangement with the various cities and E-Web. We did receive one question and I believe that you got a response to that, Commissioner Borowski, this afternoon, relative to increased prices and what that means for increased budget into, into silt for the city of Eugene. So if there were any further questions, I know that Deborah Hart would be more than happy to, to answer those, but that was the individual correspondence item. Commissioner McCray?
Yeah, not a question. I just want to thank staff for putting it together. It's really a very succinct and, and clear and complete summary. So thank you, Deborah and team, for putting that memo together on the silt.
Any other questions or comments? John B?
Yeah. So, so the question that I asked, and this was brought forward kind of from President Brown, talking about how when we have a rate increase, it is proportionally advantageous to the city of Eugene. And and I thought he had a great idea that, that we make a recommendation to the city of, and I don't know if we want to do this, but I personally will do it on my own. You know, the city of Eugene just did a work session on trying to figure out how to fund their climate action plan and, and other type of things where they're, they feel that they need funding. And for me, you know, for us to say, hey, we're doing a rate increase and the, the correspondence I got back from Deborah was that our rate increase is going to increase their silt by almost three hundred thousand dollars per year. You know, so if we made a recommendation that they tie any increases in the silt to their climate action plan, that may, that may forego a bond or a levy that might be placed on the citizens of Eugene and move that plan forward. I don't know. It's just an idea that it's, it's a lex, it's a nexus, you know? The amount of electricity being used could go to help further the city's climate action plan.
Sonia?
Yes, the first thing I thought when you, when you mentioned that, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea is that, that we would get a lot of pressure then from various groups that want more funding for climate action to increase our rates to get that money to the city. I don't know if we want that dichotomy. If we're going to give them a windfall and they're willing to say, you know, oh, we got this windfall, let's do it. I just hope that that doesn't become a pressure point for us. But I do appreciate the question about the, you know, about the three hundred thousand that they're, they're just getting because this is now extra money that citizens are paying. I would really like to look at how that, how it's either allocated or how much we actually pay them. And if there's, you know, something that we could use around a negotiation around it in some way, because it just does, it doesn't seem right that they just get a straight windfall from it. Thanks.
Mindy?
Perhaps, I don't know, Frank, when you have conversations with the city manager to bring up some ideas, but also John and Sonia, when you start meeting with leadership, city leadership, one thing that we've been talking about in these leadership meetings for a very long time is doing some kind of pilot project to help landlords take advantage of our efficiency programs, but there's no incentive for them to do it. So how can we get them to do it? Anyway, if there was a way that we could somehow do a pilot program with this extra money, I know we can't tell the city what to do, but something that, that is like in both of our best interests that relate to climate or energy related issues, I think, could be an interesting idea.
Agree. Any other comments? I'd like to comment too on that. I, you know, I just talked about that because, you know, it's, I'm not worried about the pressure, Sonia, like you are from groups trying to do that because that, we don't raise rates, at least I've never raised a rate because I wanted to. It's because I had to. Because, you know, we, you haven't experienced that recently and some of you have never experienced it, but when people come to the podium and say that three bucks is not going to work for me, you know, I'm going to have to give something up. That gets to you. When people come and say that that little amount that by raising our rates is going to increase their, their costs, it's, it resonates with me quite a bit. And we've had people do that in the past. And so I'm not worried about pressure from environmental groups saying, raise your rates so the city can have money. And, you know, the city's already getting twice as much as their, the intent of silt was intended for. It was that the legislative action was three percent. They're getting six. I don't know of any other agency that's getting six percent. Sub gets three percent. And so they're getting, they're getting twice as much as they should, and I don't think it's a big heavy ask. And so I'm going to, you know, as an individual, whether or not we want to do this as a board or as an individual, but as an individual, I'm going to suggest it because I think it, it has some merit for consideration. So you know, they just, I don't think they have a chance to pass in a levy for climate change. So anyhow, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, President Brown, I was just going to weigh in, and this kind of transitions to the board agendas, that we, we do have in March time allocated for the board to discuss the, the docket for you and Vice President Carlson for your liaisonship to the city of Eugene. And that was, that's scheduled for March. Now, we could potentially move it up to a work session in earlier February, and that would give the board collectively the opportunity to craft the messages and desired outcomes for this, this particular issue is what, what to do with the additional silt or what opportunities to look for to, to finance further. So I think that that would be a pretty effective mechanism that the board in total could use as opposed to just, and maybe in addition to individual commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Sonia?
I mostly just wanted to explain the facial expression I made when I was listening to the, the comment, but I think what you all are saying has convinced me that you know, they won, they can't raise a levy. My, my main concern is that we You know, they won, they can't raise a levy. My, my main concern is that we, I like tying things directly to. Uh, a source that makes sense and having it kind of be a roundabout thing. Is strange to me from a policy perspective, but I also get what you're saying in that they can't raise a, you know, a levy very easily. This is a way that we're already paying into it. It ties into both of our economic interests and our, you know, climate interests. So. I think you've actually convinced me the other way that that, that is a good idea and that I don't have, I don't have as many qualms with it, even though it seems roundabout, which is what initially got me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think it's also important to make sure that our non-Eugene residents that pay into silt are also acknowledged in this conversation because. You know, we got a lot of people that pay into this that don't benefit from the city, but if the city's programs on, on, um, you know, climate change and recovery, like. Charging stations and weatherization of rentals, that doesn't have to be in the city limits of Eugene. It could be to E-Web customers. And so we can put. Borders on it too, so the people upriver and in Thurston and Springfield don't feel, or in River Road don't feel that they're not getting their fair share. They're paying for something they're not getting the benefit for. So I think when we think about it, we can, I think hopefully craft it in a, in a good way. So. Other questions and comments? John B?
Yeah, I just want to circle back and just say, you know. The, where the money goes right now, it just goes into the general fund, right? The money goes into the city of Eugene's general fund. And it is just part of their, you know, they get their property taxes, they get their fees, they get this and this and this, and it's just part of the general fund. And it's not a decision that we can make, but I think it, as a utility that is providing these funds. We can say there's like, like Mindy said, I loved her idea, you know, there's mutual uh advantageous things that we can use this money for. That has a direct nexus to the amount of, uh, amount of energy that we are producing and selling. And you know, that's where I think, you know, to say that I, I want to do a property levy to do climate change, well, this has a nexus. What my property is worth has no nexus to the, to the, you know, the amount of energy I'm using. I mean, it does to a certain extent, but. You know, I think just making recommendations to them, we can't tell them what to do. That's a budgetary process, just like ours is a budgetary process and they can't tell us. But we can give constructive ideas to them, and that's what I was hoping for out of this.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, then we'll move on to the board wrap-up. Anything that, uh, any of the commissioners have to say about uh this meeting, about their results, about future meetings um coming up? Mindy?
Excellent job, John. Uh, and thank you for ending us an hour early.
Well, thank you. And I, I just hope the next time we meet is, I hope we can meet on the, on, uh, for our board retreat. That I, I really think we can all benefit from that, but I also want to respect people's personal desires too. And. Um, if it causes anybody any grief, then we won't meet. We'll just figure it out, but uh go from there. So Frank, anything else for the good of the order?
Yeah, the two quick wrap-up items, you're not quite done an hour early yet, John. Um, there's, there's two things that are headed the board direction later this week. One of them is a, a um, a mutual memo that's been crafted by um Jeff Nelson, E-Web's or, or Sub's general manager and myself. Regarding the, the status and closeout of the resolution that was jointly passed by Sub and E-Web a couple of years ago. And, and what the outcome is of that, it's, it's kind of a wrap-up and he and I are both uh sending that to our, our mutual boards at the same time at the end of the week. And then um, the other thing is you'll get the, the summary of your self-evaluation um also near the end of this week, which is. Uh, uh, should provide some um, some input to your retreat. So those are two things that'll, that'll be coming from me and, and also from. Uh, from Ann later this week. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? John B?
Yeah, two things. One, um, I was wondering if, if over the next couple of weeks, if staff could send out a memo as to um. You know, this was a, probably our first major, major storm event since the fire. And just kind of any kind of updates that they have on the turbidity or anything that they can give us any updates on, you know, how this. Major weather event has affect, you know, we've been worrying about this. And so it'd be nice if there's any kind of an update that could get sent out in a memo to us. That would be great. And then the second thing, um, do you think it would be appropriate, and I'll ask this question to Frank. Do you think it would be appropriate for us as a board to send a thank you and congratulations on the retirement to, of the E-Web or E-Pod manager? From our board and thank you for the uh, the, the collaboration over the years. Would that be something that would be appropriate from our board to, to him?
Yeah, that, that would be fine. Uh, that, that would certainly be appropriate, Commissioner. If you'd like, I can, I can um put together a draft for the board and, and if uh. If the, um, if the board seems like it, it works, then we can send that off. And, and your memo request, I'm, I'm assuming it's specific to water quality?
Yeah, and, and maybe if there's any like landslides or those types of things, that would be just a heads up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions or comments regarding things? Um, I just had to just jump in one thing, Frank, is. As you're doing that turbidity thing and everything, is there, do we have any idea how much storm water the Lee Bird Canal is conveying right now? Given the fact that we have low level snow melt and heavy rains? I mean, is it fifty percent capacity, a hundred percent capacity? How's, how's that working?
I, I don't know, Commissioner, but we can certainly find out.
Think maybe in, you know, just kind of a follow-up to save me driving up there and looking at it, but I'm kind of curious to see what, you know, we're, if we're going to have to maintain a minimum as a stormwater drainage facility. I don't, I can't think of a time when it would be used more heavily than it would be right now for stormwater conveyance.
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up with you.
Okay.
We'll follow up with the entire board on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the general manager or anybody else? All right, well, I hope to see you all in a couple of weeks, if not before, but uh we'll see what happens. And thank you for allowing me to. Lead you through this meeting process and hopefully we'll have some more good meetings. All right. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting and say good evening and happy new year.
Thank you. Have a good evening.